Good afternoon. I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. We welcome our viewing public and those present with us today. The administrative formal and informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board is hereby convened at 4:00 p.m. on the 7th day of December 2021. Pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's order of public health emergency, statewide requirement to wear masks in K-12 schools issued August 12, and Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the CDC's guidance for K-12 schools and the school board's reopening plan adopted August 10 of this year, it's determined that physical distancing will be used in chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Therefore, we have designated public speaking seating during the School Board meeting. Members of the public, as always, will be able to observe this meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's our protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal session that follows at 6:00 p.m. At 5:30, we'll conclude this meeting unless the School Board votes to continue until 5:45. That would be a hard stop to allow the Board and its school administration to prepare for the formal session to begin at 6:00. So, Madam Clerk, with that, would you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chambers are Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
So that brings us to School Board Admin Matters and Reports. And can you please note who's just arrived? And Ms. Owens has just arrived. So colleagues, anything that falls under Admin Matters, of course, we'll have our committee and liaison reports later. Okay, I'm just going to bring up one piece out of the Governance Committee. I'll save other announcements for the formal meeting, but it is concerning the summer retreat. And I emailed yesterday a new set of dates. So the original Monday and Tuesday proposed, because the retreat does typically take place on July 11th and 12th, we had both a colleague conflict and our School Board Clerk not available. So now we're looking at the following Monday and Tuesday, the 18th and 19th. And I didn't get any negative responses to the email yesterday, but again, given it's not quite 24 hours, now's the opportunity. Or we can certainly wait and re-entertain this later, but the point of committee reports is not to get into any deep discussion. Is there anybody at this point who knows of a conflict? So it sounds like we'll tentatively go with it, and if by the end of the meeting you find out, you feel otherwise, I mean, I understand this is six months away, but we also understand why we all want to lock in these dates.
So was that the July 18th and 19th?
Yes, that's Monday and Tuesday. And we would still have the July 12th School Board meeting, which is the second Tuesday of the month. The retreat would be the following Monday and Tuesday, 18 and 19. And then we would next meet for the August 8th School Board meeting, the second Tuesday of August. So that's how that would play out. So give that all a little more thought, and we'll be here for a while today, so you can get back to me. All right then, I think we'll just proceed right ahead unless anybody has anything else with our first presentation, our COVID update of the evening, and welcome Mr. Freeman.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. Dr. Saltner and I will be providing today's update. Dr. Nancy Welch, the Acting Director for Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, is with us again today and will be available to take your questions at the end of the I'll be updating you on contact tracing and community transmission data, vaccination progress, and I will provide updates on quarantine and considerations related to masking layer of mitigation. Before I share our current data, I'd like to acknowledge all of the exceptional work that our school nurses do. They go above and beyond every day serving our students. They not only perform all of their regular nurse functions, they carry the load of the additional COVID casework, which is significant. That work has enabled us to safely keep students in five days of in-person learning and provides us the data that we analyze to make sound decisions with. Thanks to all of our school nurses for all that you do. Let's start with connected cases. In light blue, you have the number of times that the disease is most likely transmitted in schools or as part of school-related activities like athletics. The number dark blue shows the total number of people affected by in-school transmission. We are currently showing a low number of in-school transmissions for the last two weeks. During that period, there were only seven in-person learning days, which likely contributed to the low number of connected cases. And as a reminder, they continue to do the work and may be able to make some connections even after this report. As of December 5, 90 people have acquired COVID-19 due to in-school transmission this school year. Here you can see the expected increase in the number of overall positive cases in schools following the Thanksgiving holiday period. On this slide, dark blue indicates the number of people who were required to quarantine. Light blue bars indicate the number of people who are exempt from quarantine because they were fully vaccinated and asymptomatic, or they had COVID within the last 90 days. The percentage by category of those who were exempt from quarantine is similar to the last brief. This is an updated slide showing the rate at which close contacts went on to test positive for COVID. For the group of students exempt from quarantine, only five of 1,136 went on to test positive for COVID. That's 0.44 percent. 0.44 percent. Of the 4,330 students quarantined, 74 students went on to test positive for COVID. That's a rate of 1.71 percent. Remember, these are averages for the entire division. We also have staff listed here. Vaccinated staff, close contacts went on to test positive 2.11 percent of the time, and unvaccinated staff, those who were required to quarantine, went on to test positive 1.5 percent of the time. This continues to show that our mitigation plan and its implementation are working. Virginia Beach has increased to the high category for level of transmission with 124.7 new cases per 100,000 within the last seven days and a percent positivity of 7.3 percent. Next to those numbers in gray, you can see what was reported at the last School Board meeting. As we briefed you last time, we have entered the holiday season and are seeing the expected increase. History tells us that community transmission will increase over the next month. The good news about this holiday period is that vaccinations are now available to the vast majority of our student population. And here are the vaccination numbers for Virginia Beach. Already, 6.2 percent of our 5 to 11 group are fully vaccinated, with 18.6 percent receiving one dose, according to yesterday's data. We delivered 3,265 doses at our school-based clinics during the last round of clinics at elementary schools, and we are underway with delivering second doses. Those clinics will continue through December 14, and we intend to continue discussions with Virginia Beach Department of Public Health about opportunities after we return from the holiday break. We continue to be grateful for all of our partnerships, and I've not yet mentioned our dedicated professionals who are part of the Virginia Beach Medical Reserve Corps. These doctors, nurses, pharmacists, ENTs, and non-medical support volunteers, they support all of our clinics, and the majority of the support at those clinics comes from the VB MRC. They are tremendously dedicated professionals who are all about service. We appreciate their support and couldn't operate these clinics effectively without All right, at the last School Board meeting, we discussed the next layer of mitigation that we intend to suspend. And there's been some questions, so I'm going to review a lot of the data that we went through last week, because I know that it's new and different, and I want to be able to layer it over and give opportunity for more discussion when we get to question and answer. Our layered prevention strategy is intended to maximize five days of in-person learning, where it's safe to do so while safely offering a broad range of extracurricular activities. As we continue to evaluate adjustments in our layered prevention strategy, we are focused on safely maximizing that five days of in-person learning and avoiding preventable disruption by making sound, evidence-based decisions. As I mentioned earlier, we know that we are entering a window of time during the holiday season where community transmission will increase. That increase will mean more cases in our buildings. And although the rate of COVID-19 has been transmitted in schools during the fall months has been low, we recognize and account for the increased risk that comes with the holiday seasons and activities moving indoors. Recommended modification, the layers of prevention are based upon analysis of all current mitigations that we have in place. Those include providing opportunities to get vaccinated, masking, and distancing to the maximum extent practicable, among several other layers of mitigation. This is a brief history of modifications that we've made to our plan. The next layer of mitigation that we evaluated was quarantine. As we all know, quarantine is in place to prevent close contacts, those who are at risk for developing COVID, from infecting others. Quarantine is a sound prevention layer to implement during a pandemic. It helps to ensure that the virus does not spread uncontrollably. It controls risk of spreading the disease. Quarantine does come with other risks, which include lost days of in-person instruction and the emotional toll that it takes on students and families when students cannot participate in normal classes and activities and being connected with others. In consultation with Virginia Beach Department of Public Health and in accordance with guidelines, we will continue to balance those risks as we progress through the pandemic. When analyzing the effect of allowing students who are close contacts to remain in our buildings, we must understand how many additional positive cases will potentially result by keeping close contacts in the in-person learning environment. This chart simplifies the consequences of close contacts remaining in schools. This data includes the average number of close contacts required to quarantine for each positive case, the observed rate of transmission, and it includes an adjustment factor for asymptomatic students. With our current layers of prevention, for every 26.3 positive cases in the high school setting, 89 students would need to quarantine, and only one additional case would result. The balance of risk that we considered is this. By suspending quarantine at the high school level, students would be able to participate in 400 days of instruction. That's 89 students times the average number of lost in-person learning days for each close contact at four and a half. That's the benefit of suspending quarantine in this case. The risk is that one additional case would be result, and that case would be in our schools. 400 days of instruction versus one additional COVID case. It's a good balance of risk to suspend quarantine at the high school level. At the elementary school, the risk balance is not there at this point. It takes fewer than four community-introduced cases to result in one additional case. We need to keep quarantine in place there for now. One of the questions that we've heard is, why implement this now, knowing that the community transmission is going to increase over the holiday period? We accounted for this. Here's the same graph that we shared last week, or last School Board meeting, which helps understand the impact. This is intended to project what might occur in the future based upon current data, rather than providing random examples that help us to understand the consequences against our own relatively recent data on positive cases in schools. We can't anticipate how significant the holiday spike will be, so let's look at the peak number of cases that we experienced in the beginning of October. At the high school level, in blue, when the number of cases that entered our schools was at its peak, there were 40 positive cases identified. With quarantine in place, students would collectively lose over 500 days of in-person learning. If we were to suspend quarantine and prevent that significant loss of in-person learning, the risk is that 1.5 additional cases would result. The data shows that the best balance of risk would be to suspend quarantine at the high school level. You can pick any week in time and do a similar evaluation of the impact. The mask only shows one week in time, and you would need to do that for each and every week to understand what the impact is. All right, so one might ask, what if the holiday spike is bigger than the fall spike? Note the peak number in high school that we just talked about is 40. So that's more than double that number. Let's show an example of 100 community-introduced high school cases. 100 cases would result in approximately 340 close contacts. Keeping those students in schools would result in over 1,500 days of additional in-person learning, at a risk of only four additional cases. It's a better balance of risk to keep those students in school rather than quarantine, regardless of the level of community transmission. It shows the significance of when you do the mitigations as described, they work. All right, based upon this data, which reflects all the current COVID prevention layers, we suspended quarantine at high schools only, starting yesterday, December 6. To be clear, contact tracing continues. We'll need to understand how the disease is being spread in schools, and contact tracing is how we do that. We'll monitor the data until January 24. By monitoring until January 24, we will have three weeks during the post-holiday period to evaluate any potential negative consequences of this change. We will then use this data to update data from middle schools and elementary schools and evaluate the potential suspension for quarantine there. Since the last brief, in collaboration with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, we've refined our intended quarantine decision criteria. Moving forward, we intend to make decisions about quarantine independently at the elementary school, middle school, and high school levels. 150 percent of the student population is fully vaccinated, and greater than 10 introduced cases results in one additional case, quarantine will be suspended at that level. We then monitor the data. If we see a bad shift in the data, we would need to reinstate quarantine. Therefore, if we observed a consecutive two-week period of 10 or fewer introduced cases resulting in one additional case, and the increase was not primarily associated with a single event, we would reinstate quarantine. We don't want isolated transient events to create a situation where shifting back and forth unnecessarily. It's disruptive. All right, so let's apply that to the decision that we recently made about suspending quarantine at the high school level. Vaccination rate for the age groups that attend high school is greater than 50 percent, and it currently takes 26, way more than 10, community-introduced cases to result in one additional case. It's well within the criteria. Now we monitor the data. All right, that's quarantine. At the last School Board meeting, we told you that we would come back with considerations regarding the masking layer of mitigation. All right, so to be clear, we're still operating in an environment where there's a mask mandate. However, we know that that mask mandate will not last forever, and there's a strong likelihood that when we get to the January timeframe, that we're going to be in a position where school boards will have to make a decision. So we need to start that conversation early. So this is not a decision, it's not a recommendation, it's an intention to be able to start a conversation now, so that we're well-prepared when a decision needs to be made. That's the context. So again, after working collaboratively with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, here are considerations for how to transition to a voluntary masking in a safe, evidence-based manner. Like quarantine, these decisions would be specific to the elementary school level, the middle school level, and the high school level, based upon their independent data. When quarantine has been suspended successfully for three weeks, and 60 percent of the student population at each independent level is fully vaccinated, we could transition to voluntary masking. We would again need criteria for when to reinstate masking if the impact was too negative. So like quarantine, if there was a consecutive two-week period where 10 or fewer introduced cases resulted in one additional case, and the increase was not primarily associated with a single event, masking would then be required in order to arrest the problem. So what might this mean for the high school level? Again, we still have a mask mandate in place. This is just to understand what the potential might be if a decision is placed on the School Board. If we reach January 24, and we have greater than, and remember, more means safer here when using this ratio, greater than 10 introduced cases resulting in one new case, we would then look to see if the fully vaccinated rate is greater than 60 percent across the high school age groups. If it is greater than 60 percent, we could transition to voluntary masking and then monitor. Again, all for consideration, all for thought. All right, it's pretty dense material, and we do want to hear your questions and comments. Specifically, we want to engage in conversation with you and hear your thoughts and considerations for masking decisions. We anticipated a change in the statewide masking mandate, and we want to prepare you for the best available information, so that when the time comes, we have a sound, evidence-based plan for how to proceed with our layered prevention strategy, including masking. I know you have thoughts, questions, and feedback. Before we go there, Dr. Saltner has a few updates, so I would like to turn it over to Dr. Saltner.
Thank you. Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Dr. Spence, members of the Board, we entered our fourth week of the Vista testing program for winter athletes yesterday, and we'd like to provide an update on that. We currently have 2,079 winter athletes with 1,565 or 75 percent of those athletes vaccinated. In the first three weeks of testing, 1,331 tests were completed, and 14 athletes recorded positive results. Now realize, these 14 athletes will no longer be required to test upon return, as they are considered as having COVID-19 in the past 90 days. That will exclude them from any further testing. We do anticipate the numbers to continue to rise, as many of our out-of-season athletes, for example, football, began conditioning yesterday, and others will be starting in the next month. Recall, students engaged in out-of-season conditioning must also test or show proof of vaccination. I want to point out that testing of our athletes has allowed for our student athletes to participate throughout the state and region, something we did not permit in the fall, when we were unaware if we were sending our athletes as a team, to travel with the possibility of transmission and students experiencing possible debilitating COVID symptoms outside the region and far from their families. Also want to point out, if we look at the first four weeks of fall and the first four weeks of the current winter season, we experienced six cancellations in the fall. The cancellations or postponements, we've had just two at this time. Returning to our efforts for relief during the pandemic for our staff, I'll give you a moment to study that slide. Our central support staff are continuing to make an impact through substituting in buildings. I had the pleasure of returning to Bayside High School on Friday. Our superintendent and many others were out as well last week. A total of 377 days, the equivalent of 2,750 hours of substitution, have been recorded since December 3. As of the day's end Monday, you can see there, 249 instructional positions have been filled by central support staff who hold licensure to do so. 73 classified positions, ranging from office staff to custodian and teacher assistant, have been filled. And please know that at the schoolhouse, they will attest to the need for this relief and support. The challenges that the schools are facing as we get out, we see they are very real. Let's look now at early release update. We approved five days of early release through the end of January, and our relief efforts have come with both intended and unfortunately, a few unintended outcomes. We entered this proposal aware our advanced technology, technical and career education, and Brock Center afternoon students would complete their work asynchronously, unable to attend face-to-face in the afternoon due to both time restraints and transportation issues. This equates to five asynchronous lessons for these students due to the early release days. Recognize as well, a few of our morning session students are arriving late to their third block class, as the schedules are being adjusted at the school level for early release. Transportation, as you know, is already understaffed, and an early release always compounds this. Know that the Senior Executive Director of High Schools, Mr. Delaney, has continued to work with our centers and schools to minimize these impacts, and one such example was a creative solution to making sure all of our governor's school students could be transported from each of their high schools through unique, using staff within the building to get our students to the governor's school. These issues are not just unique to the pandemic. I want you to realize that in a regular calendar year, we experience the same when we have an adjusted dismissal day. So as such, I believe we need to use prudence in planning any additional release days after January. Our relief efforts have, though, reaped a tremendous return, accomplishing precisely the intent of these five early release days. Overwhelmingly, our teachers report the time they so desperately needed to plan was attained, and our school leaders report a tremendous sense of relief in their buildings. We gave teachers two things: planning time, and perhaps more importantly, a sense of balance and well-being. I ask you to recall, the majority of our relief efforts are scheduled only through first semester, including not only the early release days, but the pause on professional development, or non-essential professional development, and our central support substituting initiative as well. We'll revisit these with you in our next School Board meeting. I want to answer any questions that you have, but I know that we also have present today Dr. Welch, from the Health Department, with whom you have spoken before, and I know that she is an encyclopedia of knowledge, and I'd like you to have that opportunity to speak with her while she is visiting with us.
Thank you, Dr. Saltner. So colleagues, it's now open for questions, comments, beginning with... All right, Mrs. Weems, and then Ms. Owens.
Okay, thank you. And Chairwoman Rye, I appreciate you putting the COVID update first on our information, as was previously requested, so we would have enough time. Thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Saltner, I don't think this is for you. I guess it's for Mr. Freeman or Dr. Welch. So with the reduction in quarantining, there's so much weight on the vaccine versus unvaccinated, the vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So I guess, with that being said, at the elementary level, I think that we can clearly say that to reach 60 percent vaccinated at that early age might not happen. Is that a... I mean, that's just an assumption, obviously, from me, because we started so late at that grade level, like, you know, I understand, but the amount of those that are vaccinated are very low. I'm just not sure if we're going to be able to reach that 60 percent. So that's, I just kind of want your comment on that, age group reaching such a high threshold of vaccinated. And also, I still don't understand why it's so heavily weighted on that, because science and data have told us that the vaccinated person is getting sick. And on Slide 6, Slide 6, that's so true with our staff that were quarantined. They got more sick than the ones that didn't quarantine. And so I'm just kind of confused why. We know a vaccinated person gets the sickness, gets the virus, and also spreads it, but yet we're weighing so heavily on that to make a determination with masks and quarantine. So I don't really understand that.
All right, so many elements. I'm going to start with this one, because that's the last one, and then we'll try and work our way back to build answers. So I think what you just said is a comparison. And so I think what you just said is a comparison that our quarantine staff, can you say that part again about our quarantine staff?
Well, quarantine was not required for the staff here because, and if it's not required, it's because they've been vaccinated, correct?
Well, there's two columns.
Right, well, I'm looking at the quarantine not required column.
Yep.
Okay, so that means, okay, so that means that nine people got sick, got COVID, and they were not required to quarantine because they've either had COVID or they've had the vaccine, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
COVID in the last 90 days.
Yeah, and then if you look to the right of that, the people that were quarant, that quarantine was required because that was not met, they have not had the vaccine, less people got sick at a less percentage. So, I mean, because that just proves what we already know, that those that are vaccinated are still getting sick and those that are vaccinated are still spreading the virus, correct or incorrect?
So, yes, but to understand the data, you have to look at how small those numbers are. You add one more case to that two and make it three of 133, now that number jumps up and exceeds the other percentage.
Okay.
So this is a, that is associated with such a small, with the data being so low that there can be apparent huge jumps in that, so.
Yeah, true, when you, yeah, when your numbers are low, so I'm not sure why it's there, but I mean, I guess I'm just, I still don't understand why we're weighing so heavily on that, especially at the elementary level.
Okay, I'm going to let Dr. Welch answer the questions of the effectiveness of the vaccine, but just to understand the data, that this does not indicate, this is a, this is a challenge when you get to such small numbers in data because small numbers then have a big shift in where they go. And I'll let Dr. Welch talk about the vaccine and I think you got two more questions that are in there.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity. And you asked some very good questions. And the thing to understand is that epidemiology, which is what we're talking about here, is based on going where your odds are best. And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about here, that data was founded not only on the vaccination rates, but remember masking is in place and masking has played a huge role here. And that's what layered mitigation relates to is in terms of stages. That's why, and I'm going to call it in-school quarantine because the recommendation of quarantine is still in the community that they exercise quarantine. The school, by the data that you've seen, has proven that it is actually a much safer environment than the community. And that's because of masking and vaccination. So both of them are taken into account and both of them are making the huge difference. The huge difference with elementary and high school, yes, you are right on target, the timing of when they were able to get vaccine, they haven't had time to get to that amount yet. But another issue is that children tend to play together in the playground, remove their mask, so there is actually more opportunity in just their general play activities where they are having contact without the mask as opposed to teenagers in the high school level. So it's not just vaccination. That is certainly one of the criteria that was noted in terms of something that we can measure, but I think that this data is a complement to the Virginia Beach school system. I will say, we presented it to the state because it is such a complement to the school system in terms of the effectiveness that you've been able to show. And it's a combination of vaccination and masking. It's just a question of layered as to how much each, how much of a role each plays.
Okay.
Oh, I was going to say, you asked about the vaccination and the effectiveness. No vaccine is 100%. We know that, that's a given. But the fact that you would have this small percentage proves a high degree of effectiveness. The unvaccinated has four to five times a greater risk of disease, a greater risk of hospitalization, and a greater risk of death. So yes, it's all a matter of risk. Yes, you can still become infected if you're vaccinated, but you are less contagious and you are less ill. So there's, it's not black and white, it's all a matter of odds.
Okay, thank you. So, and I guess this goes back to Mr. Freeman. So if we, if we look at our, the kind of timeline of eliminating some of our strategies, so we're, so we're eliminating the quarantine for high school and then we're going to reevaluate it January 24th. And then if that's going well, then that's when we would look at middle school, is that correct?
Yes.
If that meets that criteria, then we would look at the middle school level. And then I'm assuming that we would take three or four weeks for that to study it and to come back, correct?
So that, that flow, so what we're proposing is a more independent view of them. And now just looking at individual criteria, for the first round for high schools, we definitely want to see, because that's going to be our, this is new. So we're confident in the data, but you have to be able to monitor the data and we want to monitor that until the 24th. But it's not necessarily, so now we can independently monitor data at high schools, we can independently monitor data at middle schools, and we can independently monitor at elementary schools. So we can make those changes, not necessarily waiting for what happened three weeks with the high school or middle school, we can make those changes independent to those, those levels.
Okay, because, okay, well, that's good to know because if you look at the timeline and if we're waiting for three or four weeks to middle school, then three or four weeks for elementary, then we're going to do the mask thing three or four weeks, three or four weeks, you're looking at May for elementary school.
I understand.
Look at that optional mask.
It's not sequential, it can be simultaneously.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's, that's good to know. Okay, that's all the questions I have now, I might have some more, thank you.
And if I may take one step back to the vaccination, and I'm not an expert, but something that is also worthwhile noting, because we work with the epidemiologists on a daily basis, one of the things they have shared and they just shared is those who are vaccinated, we're seeing it being shared at a much less rate. The, when somebody who is vaccinated does catch COVID-19, they're not sharing it at the same rate as somebody who's unvaccinated.
Okay, Ms. Owens and then Mrs. Manning.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first are in regards to the same slide that Ms. Weems was asking about, slide six, where it has our quarantine and not required, et cetera. When I look at this, I'm assuming that these statistics, we can only build from the information that we have. It's not like a, you know, a double-blind study or anything. So they, in the quarantine not required categories where we see the numbers, those are going to be based on people who actually chose to go get tested. And the same thing in the quarantine required, where it says, you know, we had two staff members who quarantine was required that tested positive. Did, are you saying that all 133 people got tested and only two were positive or some number got tested that we don't know about and only two were positive? Like, is it two out of five of the people who decided to get tested were positive?
So I think your general question is, did all 133 of those who were required to quarantine get tested positive, or get tested? We can look to see that. I suspect the answer is no because they were just required to quarantine.
Right.
So what you're, what you're discussing is, could they have been asymptomatic?
Right. How accurate do we know these numbers are? I know that we can only go by information that we are able to obtain, but it does make me question exactly how, you know, accurate these numbers are in telling us what was transferred or not transferred if only certain people are being tested, particularly when we're looking at the, the highest one here, which is at 2.11%. It makes me wonder, because I was wondering myself, why, why are these teachers, these staff members, getting it at this higher rate? And then I thought maybe they are not. Perhaps that category, staff members who are vaccinated, are more likely than the other categories to voluntarily test themselves after a exposure and therefore we're seeing the additional positives. If the categories aren't equally likely to get tested, I don't know that they're, that comparison really does much to make.
So, one of the things about that is, how are you going to use the data and understand where the data might be strong and where it may not have tell you everything that you want? And from a, from a leadership standpoint, as you know, the thing about leadership is you don't always have 100% of the information.
Right.
It's relatively easy when you have 100% of the information. You're expressing a concern, so I'm going to respond with how we took that into consideration when we made plans for quarantine. So if you look at the, at the bottom of this slide, it says that these numbers, so what we wanted to be able to do is if you're going to keep somebody in an in-person learning environment who is a close contact, you have to not just understand how many people are going to go on, what's the rate at which they go on to develop COVID. You want to be able to understand what's the consequence of keeping them in the in-person learning environment, how much is that going to be shared? So to your point, so it's not just about the rate that is shared. So there, what's accounted for here is the average number of close contacts that comes from each positive case, the observed rate of transmission, so that's what you're talking about there, and then the frequency of asymptomatic cases. So our epidemiologist is what they do for a living. They know that there are asymptomatic cases, so they do a calculation to adjust for those who are asymptomatic, so those who had it, but we just didn't know about it. So that is included in this and it's why this data is really important because this is the first that we've been able to really understand what would be the impact in schools. Up until this point, we've been looking at community data and spikes in community data and trying to project what, what would occur in our schools and what the result would be. You saw how we shared, we know that based on our current mitigation strategy, that those numbers, and I even gave the really elevated numbers of, let's say that it wasn't, it was over two times worse than what we saw in the fall spike, what would the consequence be? And that consequence would be accounting for additional asymptomatic cases or cases that we didn't know about.
Sure.
It would be, for every 100 cases at the high school, it would be about four introduced. So you're, what you're concerned with, we're accounting for the fact that the data is not perfect and we're trying to do a good mathematical adjustment. And then, to your point, then you monitor, because really what the important thing is is making a sound, evidence-based decision and then monitor it and see if it, if it did what you thought it was going to do. And if it goes worse, then you look to make adjustments.
Right. And so kind of with that, that same theme, looking at that chart on slide 13, we have a projection of the students, but there's no projection on how the lack of quarantine then affects the staff members when the staff member, numbers are so much different than the student numbers in, in this one. Are we, do we have concerns about how the lack of quarantine affects staff members and what an extra one or two absences for staff members would mean for our high schools?
So we have not suspended quarantine for staff members. It's only high school students.
Right.
So that would result in one additional high school student case by keeping them in the building. Our staff would still be required to quarantine if they were identified as a close contact, so they would not therefore be in our buildings and not be at risk of sharing a potential case if they became positive.
Okay, so they, but they would be around the, the high school students who are not quarantining?
Correct. And so, so that's a good point. So high school students who are not quarantined are close contacts. They are not positive with COVID.
Right.
They have a potential, they have a risk, but we've shown that that risk is really low.
Right.
And then we've accounted for all those other pieces of data and the risk for keeping them in there. So your question is, is this going to have a negative consequence on our staff?
Right. That was the only chart that wasn't.
That negative consequence is worse, you know, this is two times worse than we had in the fall. If there were 100 cases, community introduced cases in our building at a high school level, there would be four additional students in the building. So what we're talking about now is going from 100 to 104. Is that a substantial increase in risk to our staff? We think no, that the better balance of risk, based on all of those in-person learning days that would have been lost, is to keep them in the in-person learning environment.
Okay.
I love what you're doing, by the way, because this is what we, this is what we do. We think through the problem and we want to get to a point where we understand. So I, I love everything you're doing because this is what we want you to know, understand and be comfortable with because we deal with this data all the time. We're constantly pouring through it and I know that you guys get about a 30-minute shot of it at one school board meeting. So this is important. So I appreciate where you're going with the question.
Thank you. And that, while it's not an issue at this point, would have been helpful to have this session prior to it going into effect so that we could have talked it through and had some time to think on it prior to getting the calls from the community asking about it. But it's in place now, so.
We briefed this last week. This is a review of what we briefed last week. Two weeks ago, thank you.
Okay. Okay. This other question is just about the, I guess the masking criteria, although it's kind of the same with the updated quarantine decision and the masking considerations. And again, it might just be, we have to work with the data that we have. When we say 60% of the student population being fully vaccinated, I assume we're just going on the numbers in the city of kids between that age range, although that may represent one school being 80% vaccinated and a different school being 20% vaccinated. We're taking it at that large and then applying those things down because we just don't have data, school, independently at each schools.
Correct. We would use the community data at age level to approximate what that is.
Okay. Is there any concern that that places certain schools at higher risk than others?
We consider all factors when it goes into it. The number 60 is chosen, there's nothing that's magic, about 60%, but it is a good balance of risk when you look at the whole population of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So to your point, could there be a school that they fall in a lower population of that? Potentially. The way that the process works is you remove the layer of mitigation and then you monitor and you see what the impacts are. And if the rate goes in the wrong direction, you re-implement that layer of mitigation and you go from there. So there, and I think this is probably an important point too, is there, we don't have a door that we step through, you can't go back through. You, with the best of information available, you balance the risk. So again, the risk is balanced against the, about what our, what our values are, what's being lost by keeping that layer of mitigation in place. And then if you make that step and you, and you learn that, well, the disease spread at a greater rate than what is appropriate for safety in our schools, then you re-implement that layer of mitigation.
Okay. Is there any discussion about, if there are concerns, being able to address them at each, if, I don't know, I don't want to name a specific school. If a school A is, just happens to be lower vaccination rate than school B and school A starts to see some of these spreads, is it able to, are we able to address it with school A saying, we need to put a layer mitigation back just at school A without bringing it back across the full spectrum of schools or we need to bring all the schools back up if school A has this issue?
So I wouldn't want to come to you as a body and, and start to really make a complex if-then matrix for how to do this.
Right.
But if we got to the point, and so we're talking months away now, right? If we got to the point that we said, all right, there's one high school that just looks very different in as far as COVID data than every other high school, we'd be open to that discussion. I think everybody has caution when you start talking about treating any group differently than other groups. So I always think it's worthy of discussion and that's what we do is we work through those things. There would be a lot of balance and give and take that would go, to go with that. There would be a lot of balance and give and take that would go with that.
Okay. And I think it can be, obviously, a continued discussion as data is collected and we're seeing where things go. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I have a couple of comments and then a couple of questions. I agree with Ms. Wiens regarding the vaccine, requiring the vaccination at the 60% threshold where the criteria to transition volunteering masking, because I agree with her, especially at the elementary school level, we may never reach that. So I have some great concerns about that 60% threshold. A statement was made that masking played a huge role in where we are. However, I don't think we have a control group to compare that to, so I'm not sure how we can definitively make that statement. We do have states that have allowed the choice in masking in their schools and their COVID rates are lower than our state. So I think that we need to be careful of coming to assumptions when we don't have that data to back it up. My questions, my first question is, I know that we're using percent positivity as kind of part of our measurements of where we are and as far as transmission rates go. It's my understanding that over-the-county counter-testing is now widely available. And, you know, someone just told me today, oh, my wife wasn't feeling well, so she went out and got a test at the Walgreens, did the test, and it was negative. So, oh, I don't have COVID, I probably have a cold. And so, but then you have those people who are testing positive with those test kits, and then they are going to the doctor to have that positive test again at the doctor. So those positive tests, I'm concerned that the numbers are going to be skewed because of these at-home testing kits. And we're still using these transmission rates. So that's my first question. How are we considering that?
So, I understand your question. So the benefit, I think you said that we're using percent positivity. And the benefit of this plan is no longer using community transmission rates or percent positivity as a decision for what we do in our schools as far as quarantine and masking go. Because we can look at our own data, and that data combines the average number of close contacts that are placed on quarantine for positive student, the observed rate of transmission, and the frequency of asymptomatic cases. And that's how you determine risk in school based on this.
Okay. It was just, it was in our presentation and we're sent that weekly. So I just don't think that that's a good measure of kind of where we are. But if we're not using that anymore, then...
So, and if I may address that, so one of the things that we're, that we're realizing and discussing as we go through it is, you know, we, these are the same slides and I have remained consistent showing you similar slides since we started. But as we gain more knowledge, we're shifting towards a, we have enough data in our schools to be able to make decisions based on that, independent of community data. And we can do it, we think, safely by understanding that data. So at this point, we're not using it. And I, we're going to have discussion internal, and I have a recommendation that based on that, some of this, what we've previously been sharing, which was good at the time, is a little bit stale and not useful. So we're probably going to kind of shift and reprioritize what gets shared.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And then, Dr. Welch, I appreciate you addressing my concerns via email regarding the hospitalization numbers that are inaccurate. I checked the website today and it still hasn't been fixed. Where are we on that and how can I help push to get that data? Because it's very skewed.
I have sent your concerns up to the central offices. In fact, I communicate with the central office on a regular basis. I'm as concerned as you, because we can't do anything when it's inaccurate. And they feel that they, the central office does a dashboard, the local doesn't. And they feel that they have found the glitch. It relates to how information is being entered in some healthcare systems. And they are working with the healthcare systems to correct that. I'll gladly give you the name of the person I've been communicating with. Everything helps because...
Okay, that would be great. That would be great. Because I noticed today on the dashboard that lists cases of children, child hospitalizations, is showing for the last two weeks on one screen that there were 34 for our area, or 31, but then on another screen it's showing three. So I just, I have some concerns that we're trying to rely on data and the data is wrong. So I appreciate you addressing that.
I don't use it because I can't rely on it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then my next question, and maybe it's more of a comment, but I need to express my concerns, and this might be for Dr. Saltner or Mr. Freeman or Dr. Robertson. The early release days, you know, I appreciate you sharing the concerns that we had as a parent of one of those students in that half-day program. It's almost like salt in a wound after being virtual for almost all of last year in those hands-on learning programs where it is imperative for them to be in class to be able to learn. I just, I have some great concerns. I know that asynchronous lessons are supposedly happening, but asynchronous lessons can't happen when it's in, when it's hands-on learning. So, I mean, have you given any thought to how we can help the CTE students, the Environmental Studies Academy students, the ATC students to make up for that in-person learning time that they're losing?
Mr. Delaney, I'm sorry. Mr. Delaney is working with the principals of these centers and the home schools to try and impact that. We are keenly aware, and that is why I presented it this evening, we know that over 1,000 students attend the three centers of which we're speaking. In fact, there are 545 students who are either at Bo-Tech, who are at Career and Technical Career Education Center, the ATC Advanced Technology Center, or the BRAC Environmental Science Program. That is precisely why I said we need to use great prudence when we look beyond January and make a decision regarding continuation of these early release days. I am on your page.
So we are looking at how we can help them make up that hands-on learning time?
Mr. Delaney is communicating regularly, particularly where there are individual students who are not meeting with success and parents have reached out. In addition, on a regular basis, he is touching, speaking with these principals and attempting to mitigate a situation that we created with early release days.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes and then Mrs. Anderson.
So I'm glad that Mrs. Manning brought up the lack of control group with the masking. We keep hearing that masking is effective, but without that control group, we're not necessarily making an accurate statement. So I think we should stop using that unless we do have a control group where we can show that it is accurate. That was just a comment. And I was thinking more and more, as Ms. Owens was talking about this testing data, we're only testing certain groups weekly. So obviously, the likelihood of showing positive or showing that the unvaccinated have it more. Obviously, if you're testing them weekly, you have much more opportunities to show that, whereas unvaccinated people slide under the radar. It is the exact same as when people say, most accidents happen within five miles of your house. That's because every time you leave, whether you drive five miles or 1,000 miles, you're always within five miles of your house. So it's kind of a false statistic. And unfortunately, this seems to be self-perpetuating here, where we're saying that the unvaccinated are showing more positive cases. Well, of course they are, because they're the only ones we're testing. And then we're using that statistic to keep testing them and masking them. And so I'd like to see that addressed. That's just, that you're kind of using the skewed numbers against them to keep, you know, enforcing these measures.
I'm sorry. Some of the data is coming from national studies, not just here within the school system. And Mayo Clinic, I know Ms. Manning is very familiar with that study. And that certainly has shown a difference with regards to masking or not masking and the transmission of disease. So that's sort of a hallmark in terms of risk and with getting disease, of transmitting disease relative to masking. And the state and national studies are being done and continue to be done looking at the rate of hospitalization, the rate of cases, the rate of deaths of vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So a lot of those statements with regards to greater risk or less risk are based on larger studies, because we don't have the capability at a local level to do a research directed with a control group. You're right, a control group is an excellent way, and that's what these other sources have done. So we utilize some of that national data, since we can't do it locally. But it's good you're asking the question, and that's why we go to the national data.
Thank you.
Done, Mrs. Hughes? Okay, Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. I appreciate that we are able now to use our own data. And I feel like it is more useful and reliable in making decisions that we need to be able to make. And I'm glad that we finally reached this point where we can use that data to help us. And so, but as far as, and I want to speak to the substitutes that have been happening from administration. And I want to say, I want to venture to say that our administration staff is finding out many aspects of what's happening in our schools. And it's a bit ironic, because as a teacher, when I was teaching, there were many times that I heard teachers say that if only admin could come and substitute in our classrooms, they would really get a feel for what was happening. And I, not saying that everybody, that all administrators have forgotten what it's like, because most administrators, you know, work their way up from being classroom teachers. So, but you do forget. And it's good that, I think this is working, you know, for a couple of reasons. It's good to have our administrators back in the classrooms. And, you know, I don't know if you guys are going to continue doing this, but I can see where it is beneficial to see what's really happening in our schools.
We feel the same.
Thank you.
So we do have another workshop, but I first want to... Oh, yes, Mrs. Hughes. Ms. Owens?
And this is just one quick one. I know that it said that contact tracing will continue so that we can monitor how things are going. Does that include close contacts still being contacted by the school?
Not necessarily by the school, but close contacts will be contacted, yes.
Okay, by whoever contacts them?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll continue. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hughes.
So this Mayo Clinic study, they were using mannequins.
It would be unethical to use humans when you're looking at transmission of viruses. So, but they, this is research, as you know, they do studies with mice, with a number of different animals, because of the ethical question. But what they developed was, it wasn't so much the mannequin that was the point, but it was the transmission of the virus through the mask and the quantity that would get to the person, the mannequin in this case.
Would it not be more realistic to compare places that are not using masking right now and places that are and look at their numbers?
Well, there are some studies that have done that.
Because the numbers I'm seeing is that states that are wide open seem to have lower transmission rates than us, but we're basing what we're doing on studies where they used mannequins.
Well, incorporating that into our other studies is not certainly the sole data that's being used. And there are certainly states that are not doing so well. There's, there are more things than just the masking that are involved. There's distancing, there's quarantine, there's the compliance issue. So there are lots of additional things that are involved in terms of the transmission of the disease. And that's why we're focusing on our local data. I can assure you, our local data here is totally different than southwest Virginia. I used to be health director in that area, and I can assure you, it's totally different.
Right, but our data is not even correct on the website. So mannequins are not getting sick and there are errors on our website. And that's what we're basing all of this on.
That, no, we're not basing anything on the hospital rates. That data is not being used in developing the plan of the layered mitigation at all. I'm as concerned about that as you are.
Okay. Dr. Welch, while you're at the podium, I just want to state publicly that you have been our acting district director since August and how grateful we are. I think today's questions and comments, as always, among this school board, it reflects the spectrum of questions, comments, concerns in the community. And so that's what we're here for. And I do want to share just this one comment with an email we got today from Dr. Jabari, who, for the public's purposes, is the Virginia Department of Health Community Health Services Chief Deputy. And one sentence in particular about you, Dr. Welch, that your tremendous public health experience and direct engagement with staff and community partners have been critical to ensuring the continued success of the health district in its current pandemic response and preparation for future operational efforts. So I, we assume you're going to continue in your role with Chesapeake?
Oh, no, I'm continuing in Chesapeake. And we have selected a health director for Virginia Beach who comes on board this Friday. And I will continue to work with this individual and to be a mentor and work with her with the staff. And then I will be transitioning over to also cover another district that's without a director in addition to Chesapeake.
Thank you. So I thought that was a good note to end on. Thank you, Steph, too, and colleagues, for your questions and comments.
Thank you very much.
So now we have Ms. Crystal Pate with us, our chief financial officer, and we have a health plan comparison on our schedule.
Good evening, Chairwoman Ryan, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board members, Dr. Spence. Let a couple, cut a couple minutes off of this. This afternoon, our health consulting firm, Mercer Representatives, will be presenting a benefit valuation analysis report to you that is comparing Virginia Beach City Public Schools' health plan values and features to some of our neighboring school divisions to kind of learn where we rank and information to consider what actions may be taken to improve our competitiveness. So I'm going to turn this over to Linda Mackin. She's Director of Consolidated Benefits, and she'll briefly speak on her office and some of their responsibilities. And then we'll turn it over to Mercer Representatives to provide the report.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to share the information with you this afternoon. If it's agreeable, the information that you wanted me to share on the office, perhaps I can provide that in a memo later so that we can get through the, that'd be great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's related to a conversation with Governance Committee about wanting to learn a little bit more about what the benefits office does. So we'll get that into a memo form for you. Save a little time tonight.
So just to add on to what Crystal had mentioned, the information that Mercer has, and one of the things, the reasons that they have conducted this study is over concerns over recruitment and retention. And what this information will help us show is where we rank and any changes in our plan design and in our contribution rate strategy that would affect that ranking. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to David Peo, Principal of Mercer, and also Monica Walsick, Actuary.
Welcome to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to review this analysis with you all. And we want to be respectful of the time, so we'll move through this as briskly as we can and certainly let us know what questions you have. So, okay, just a quick few facts about the report. As was described, our task was to compare Virginia Beach City Public Schools' plans with some of your identified peers in the Hampton Roads area, as well as a few across the Commonwealth. And we've got that list on the next page, you'll see in just a minute. This is limited to medical and prescription drug. The medical and prescription drug plan currently administered by Optima. Again, our charge was to evaluate your plan and neutralize differences between these entities as it would relate to the population, the geography, the risk of the individuals and their claims experience. So we evaluate neutrally and then we'll present you with rankings for your plans so that you can have an accurate benchmarking and utilize that for decisions as you move forward to meet your goals for attraction and retention. All right, so this page has the list, as I mentioned. It's predominantly Hampton Roads. It's predominantly Hampton Roads entities with, with a few of the larger that are in your, your size category across the, across the Commonwealth. That bottom bullet there will, we focused on the two plan categories that will be in place for you all for 2022. The PPO, Point of Service category, and then the High Deductible Health Plans. And we'll elaborate a little bit more on that. So just a couple of quick comments about some definitions or some provisions that we'll, that we'll be talking about. So when we, when you hear the term "plan design," we're focused on the features of the plan that will generate cost share by the patient. So that would be deductibles, co-pays, the co-insurance, which is the percentage in those instances that individuals would pay, as well as the out-of-pocket maximum, the limits that cap their liability. And so we capture that in a, in its totality with something that Monica will elaborate on called actuarial relative value. That's a single number that can compare plans and specifically allow you to see relativity, given that there are so many different variables within the plans. And then we also want to factor in contribution, premium contribution requirements that employees face, so payroll deductions specifically. All right, so we'll start off with the, the PPO and Point of Service Plan rankings here. And so the bar charts at the top. I would encourage you to pay less attention to the numbers and more, more, more focus on the relativity of the bars. So you'll see there, the color scheme is those in gray are those that are geographically proximal to you all. The blue ones are those that are comparable in size but outside the area. And then purple is, of course, Virginia Beach. So we, the relativity there, you can see that the PPO, the POS plan that is offered by Virginia Beach Schools currently ranks eighth out of 10 when we look at it in totality, plan design and contributions. So that's the ranking there. And then what we wanted to do is to highlight some of the provisions, not all, but some of the provisions for you to provide a comparison. So we've got Virginia Beach Schools in purple in that first column, and then Chesapeake and Norfolk, which are the number one and number two. And then Fairfax is the median. So as you'll see there, the, the ranking, if you go down Virginia Beach Schools' column there, we've got the employee contribution rates. Now, what we've, this is just for illustrative purposes here. So we have looked at the contributions for all tiers of enrollment. We've just highlighted here for space sake, the employee and the family. So these are the annual amounts that employees have deducted from their paycheck for this particular plan. So if you go across the row, you'll, you'll have that comparison. That's what's factored into the relativity above in addition to the plan provisions that are outlined in the, in the subsequent rows. Deductible, out-of-pocket, the co-insurance, and then the actuarial relative value. So let me define that real quickly. Eighty-seven point five percent for the schools. That figure represents the percentage of the approved healthcare expenses that are paid by the plan. So on average, in aggregate, the plan is going to pay eighty-seven point five percent of approved costs. The inverse of that would be payable by the patient, by the employees. And so you can compare that row across as you wish to look at your competitors. And again, I'll highlight or emphasize the actual relative value is just the plan. Does not take into consideration the contribution requirement, but the bar relative rankings takes both into account. So the, the pertinent questions are, what are you going to do? How could you use this data for decision-making? So I'll ask Monica to talk about some of the actions that could be taken to change your ranking.
Yes, so now that we've seen where Virginia Beach lies compared to its peers, we've put together a couple of different strategies in order to improve that ranking. And as David mentioned, you know, there's multiple different components, part of the plan design and the contributions. And so we've laid out a couple individual action items in this table up at the top, and I'll talk through each of these individually. So the first that we looked at was decreasing the employee contribution rates to align with that of Chesapeake. We've called that A1 in this scenario. The cost estimate to put that in place would be 5.7 million. What that would do on, on its own would improve the ranking from an eighth-place ranking to a fourth-place ranking. Similarly, we took a look at aligning those contribution amounts for employees with Norfolk. That's A2 in this table, and that would be a similar estimate, 5.8 million, and would achieve a rank of second. Next, moving towards the plan design features, we did look at decreasing the deductible from the current 850, 1,700 to a $500 single deductible, $1,000 family. That's labeled as B, and that would be a .7 million dollar cost estimate and would produce a ranking, a new ranking of seventh. So just a slight movement there. And then lastly, we did look at matching the full plan design, the deductible, out-of-pocket, maximum, co-insurance, all of those features to align with Chesapeake, and that resulted in a 1.5 million estimate and did achieve a rank of seventh. Now, we have multiple different individual action items, but we've put together a few of them, combined a couple of them. The top part of this table can be seen almost as like a menu of options, so we did want to show some combinations. And from what you can see, combinations one and two each result in a second-place ranking for schools. Combination one is aligning the contributions with Chesapeake and reducing that deductible slightly to 500 and 1,000. That would be a total cost investment of 6.4 million and achieves that second-place ranking as well. The second combination is aligning the contributions with Norfolk while also decreasing that deductible to the same 500,000 dollar level, which is a 6.5 million cost estimate, again, achieves that ranking of second. And then lastly, if we align the plan to match Chesapeake, both in contribution and design, it would be a 7.2 million dollar investment in that first year, which would achieve that first-place ranking. And so these costs are specific to the schools. They don't factor in any city-related costs, and they don't take into account any anticipated migration between the plans or additional dependent or tiled participation, which could create some additional cost. And then lastly, just to note, there are some differences in the wellness programs between the different peer groups. However, that is not factored into this analysis here, these numbers. So then, those are all of our options. We did want to show a side-by-side comparison of the Virginia Beach Schools' plan with those actions taken. And so on this table, you can see what the Virginia Beach Schools' plan would look like to achieve that first-place ranking. You can see that the annual employee rates, the deductible, out-of-pocket, max, co-insurance is aligned with what you see for Chesapeake, since we have matched them up. And then we've also incorporated the second-place ranking, the individual action item A2, since that is the lowest cost to get to second place. And here we've shown just the contribution levels aligned with Norfolk. And so next, we can move on to the high deductible, since what we've talked about so far has just been the POS PPO plan.
So the format, as you, as you will see, is, is similar. The scheme in this, for this high deductible health plan, the schools program is ranked seventh out of, out of nine. And I'll just take a quick mention, we throw these acronyms around, so I want to make sure that everyone understands it, high deductible health plan. So that is the HSA-qualified deductible plan. It's set in a tax-advantaged manner. It has a, requires a minimum deductible of $1,400 for the single and $2,800 for the, the family. So that, there, just keep that in mind. There are some limits that you could, you can't go below that and still have it be HSA-qualified. So I won't go over each of these rows there, but just, you know, call your attention to, to the ranking. The same provisions, the annual employee rates, the, the contribution rates you can, you can see there. That is, I would say, an area of significant opportunity to, to improve the rankings. If you just follow that row across, you'll see that there, there are some material differences in the amounts that are required to be paid by, by, by Virginia Beach School employees. And then again, the, the actuarial relative value compares the actual plan design. So when you think about what if folks, if they're a prospective employee of Virginia Beach City Public Schools, you know, they're, they're going to focus on largely two things. The contribution that will come out of their paycheck and then the deductible, because that's what typically what they have to pay upfront before the benefit plan will, you know, will begin to pay benefits. So just with the same previous analysis, Monica can talk, can talk about some of the actions that could be taken if you're interested in influencing that ranking.
So a very similar setup here for the high deductible health plan, where we've come up with a couple of strategies. In here, there is the added component of that HSA funding, which we have incorporated into one of these action items. So going down the list again, the first option is to, or the first action item is to increase the employer HSA funding by $500 per person. This would be an incremental cost of 1.6 million and achieves that fifth-place ranking. Again, we can look at the contribution strategy and decrease the employee rates to align with Hampton, who is first for the high deductible health plan. That would be a 1.4 million dollar investment and achieves a ranking of sixth place. Reducing the deductible to the 2022 IRS minimum. The 2022 IRS minimum for an HSA-qualified high deductible health plan is a 1,400, 1,400 single and 2,800 family. That's in order to maintain that HSA fund and have that account that needs to be at least 1,400 and 2,800. So we've modeled that as a plan design option, which results in a 1.4 million dollar investment, achieving that sixth-place ranking, and then matching the plan design entirely with Hampton so that it is in that first-place position that 2.6 million achieves that second-place ranking. And again, looking at the various different combinations, we can see the different investments and the new ranking in place. Combinations one through four result in that second-place ranking for the schools with a, with a range of costs from 2.8 million to 4.4 million. And then the final combination, that fifth combination, which would align the plan with Hampton, who is currently in first in both, in, in all three components, HSA funding, contribution, and plan design, is a 5.6 million dollar investment, and that achieves a first-place ranking. And again, similar, similar caveats for this slide. This is specifically schools' cost, not city, and doesn't account for any plan migration or additional participation. And then it does not reflect those wellness programs as well. And just one note, the HSA funding for 2022 is scheduled to increase from 500, 1,000 to 750, 1,250, single family. But that is reflected in this analysis already. The 500 would be in addition to that. And then on this slide, again, we've shown the, the Virginia Beach Schools' plan design and contribution structure with those actions taken. Again, on the leftmost column, we've put in place that first-place ranking where we've combined the three various components to align with Hampton. So you can see the employee contributions with annual employee rates, as well as the plan design, match the Hampton design. And then for the second ranking, we've incorporated the individual action item D, since that is the lowest cost to get to second. And with that, now that we've looked, looked at the various different combinations, the required investment in year one for all of these plan designs, we also do have some considerations to consider, and I will let David speak to.
Yes, just some things to, to think about as you, as you process this and think about, you know, possibly making changes. We've got another slide that's coming up that's going to have some more quantitative data for you. But obviously, want to, want to point out that any plan enhancements, whether they be contribution improvements from the employee's perspective or, or plan design, would, would increase the reliance on the health fund that, that's in existence today. I think we mentioned the migration. If you improve the attractiveness of the plan, that could attract more people to move from the lower-cost high deductible health plan to the point-of-service plan. So just something to think about. And then for frame of reference, we wanted to share with you the updated enrollment figures that will be effective 2022 in January. You've got about, about two-thirds of your enrollment in the point-of-service plan today, about a little over a third in the high deductible health plan. That's our frame of reference when we think about if you make some changes, that, that, that ratio of enrollment could change. There could also potentially be some folks who bring their dependent children onto the plan that may not do that currently. Again, as the attractiveness or the affordability of the plan changes, folks will trigger, that'll just trigger a discussion with, with themselves and their family. In the current environment, you all are obviously consolidated with the city, so whatever plan changes you would make, you know, there, there's certainly that, you know, that, that dynamic in play. We've not, we've not deliberated on the retirees at this time. We've just focused on the, the actives. And then obviously, there'll be a communication effort to, to roll out and execute whatever it is that, that you may consider. So we'll, we'll, as I said, we'll share some quantitative information here on this next slide. And really, the, the goal of that was, of this next slide is really to do, you know, multiple things. One is to give you the opportunity to think about different scenarios. First place here, second place here. And also think about the financial implications for not just one year, but for three years, to help frame that up there for you a little bit more clearly. And then also just reinforce the notion of healthcare trend and that these costs will continue to increase, you know, over time, on average, about 6%. So Monica, why don't you take the next one?
Sure. Yes, and David laid this out very nicely. We've talked about individually the PPO and the high deductible health plan separately. But on this slide, we were able to combine the total costs for implementing both of those together into this little matrix that you can see if you wanted to, for example, have a first-place rank for the PPO with that design combination that we had talked about. But maybe a second-place ranking for the high deductible health plan, that total investment for both would be 9.8 million. You can apply that logic for any number in the chart there. But one thing that's important to note is that the health cost isn't stagnant. It is, it's not a one-time investment. So the left-hand table is the initial cost for the first year. However, healthcare does trend year over year at an average healthcare trend of 6% per year. That is higher than typical inflation. It accounts for utilization of services and aging population, various different factors. And so with that, we wanted to provide a three-year cost estimate with that trend in place. And so if you were to take that 9.8 million combination that I just mentioned and look at it over a three-year period with that trend included, you'd be looking at a 31.2 million dollar investment over that three-year period. One other thing to note, that these are numbers for the schools. But when we do look at claims experience, we are looking at the schools and the city together. Down at the left of this slide, you can see the, the claims cost trend over the past few years. So you can see how 2019 compared to 2018, 2020 compared to 2019, and then our most recent data that we have, quarter three, through, data through quarter three of 2021 compared to data through quarter three of 2020, and the trend year over year. Healthcare trend is expected to be volatile, fluctuate year over year, so it's not always going to be 6%. Past two years from 2018, 2019, and 2019 to 2020, the total trend was below that 6%. However, more recently, the claims experience has been coming in unfavorably, and so it is trending at 21.2% year-to-date. And so with that trend emerging significantly higher than budgeted, it is putting some additional stress on the health fund. And we have some additional details on claims experience and the projected costs that we have for upcoming years in the appendix, which we will touch on in a few slides. And so with that, we did want to just touch on quickly the slides in the appendix. As mentioned, the.
If I may interrupt, we may have to end this part here to allow just a few questions. And then I'm going to pose a question to my colleagues and the superintendent on whether we want to continue our own discussion, continue workshop later with a formal meeting, or just plan on a future workshop.
Well, I.
But please go ahead first, Mrs. Melnick.
So you gave us a list of identified peers. Yet, I don't, how many of those 10 that you gave us have consolidated benefits? How many share benefits with their cities? Because when you're showing us Chesapeake's numbers, they, they're standalone. And our benefits. Because when you're showing us Chesapeake's numbers, they're standalone, and our benefits, since we've consolidated with the city, has changed drastically. And so, you know, as a former VBCPS employee who had healthcare, I can attest to that. So we talk about healthcare and that numbers, you know, a lot, we have power in numbers ourselves without the city, and so I have to wonder, how much better would our benefits be if we were a standalone? And again, how many of those ten have combined benefits with their cities?
Norfolk has a consolidate, or a combined, at least procurement with their health plan. There are no others that I'm aware of that do that.
And Norfolk's were terrible. And so I have to, I mean, I'm just-
What I want to point out is this, in the appendix, which is the slide that's showing here, and David can speak more to this, is even though Virginia Beach has a large population by being combined with the city, you can see where certain years the schools were trending higher than the city, and in other years, the city's trending higher than the schools. So it helps the spread when you are combined with even a greater population.
I mean, that seems fair in theory, but I just don't see that, I just don't know that that's true. And it, when we look at some of the benefits that Chesapeake has, they put a lot of money in healthcare, first of all, way more than we do. But we put money into other things that they wish they had, so that's a balance there. But, you know, we started a prescription, you know, we were a part of it, Linda, looking at our own pharmacies, and that was an impossibility for us straight out of the gate, which is why that whole thing is dissolved, I'm assuming. This is very frustrating to me. I shop for health insurance every year as the owner of a business, and this is very, very frustrating to me. And I, I just, every year, wonder, we talk about these numbers all the time with HR, I just wonder if we're doing everything we possibly can for our employees. And I would want to know, how much better would things be if we were a standalone unit, again, as we were years ago?
Mrs. Anderson, and then we'll figure where we go from here.
Well, I've been concerned about our health insurance costs for quite, for several years. And I know, I hear, we hear all the time, our staff tells us, teachers, teachers, all of our staff tells us that we give them a small raise and their health insurance eats up everything that we give them. The health insurance in Virginia Beach, people just say it sucks. We, I mean, they tell us all the time that we, you know, and they're leaving us, we've had people leaving our division and going to other divisions locally because of the health insurance, because they can take home more money, you know, if they teach in another division. So, you know, I want to know, you know, if we are serious about making, you know, improvements in this, are we, do you feel the city is going to be able to do this? I mean, they have to do this. If we're combined with the city, the city has to be able to do this for their employees as well.
The city is doing a compensation study at this time, and I think I understand that their results will not be until March or April. So if the boards so chose to move forward with providing additional funding, that could certainly happen. I think a change in a plan design would need to be in collaboration with the city. But the reference to Chesapeake, that's why we were kind of charged with finding out what it would take to get to first or second, which is why they brought you this information today. But the additional employer contribution of all of these entities is greater than Virginia Beach, which is why our costs are higher for the member.
And I understand that, but I do appreciate that you did this study, because this really brings a light on a problem that we've had for so many years, and this really helps us. And I'd like to go on record stating that, you know, I'm in favor of making some changes to help our staff in this regard. So thank you.
So, Dr. Spence, may I ask that we maybe just talk offline about another opportunity for discussion, because this is a lot to absorb, and I'm not sure that tonight is the right time to continue this discussion.
No, I think that's right, and obviously, you've just gotten this information, so it is a lot to absorb, and it would be helpful for us as you're looking through it, if you've got questions, if you could forward those to me so that I can share those with Linda and Crystal, and we can begin putting together answers for those. And I know we have a PPMC meeting that's going to come up in January, and that'd be a good time for us to talk about those questions and start providing some answers to the board through the committee. And obviously, that sort of falls in line with, because it's early in January, our budget development conversation as well. So we will, I think that's probably the best approach right now, would be for you all to begin going through that information. If you've got specific questions you'd like to get answers to, if you'll get those to us, we can work on those and be prepared to talk about that in, I think it's January 5th with the PPMC.
Does that work for everybody? All right. So thank you to our guests, to our benefits representative, and workshop is concluded. We'll reconvene six o'clock for formal meeting.